Like shat, like-
It's shattered.
Oh, yeah.
I figured that's where, that's... He doesn't actually live.
Anybody want to talk about it? It's coming on the eighteenth.
Oh, but it's not on the agenda today?
No, no, no. So, we're not talking about today. I'm just... She just came to talk to me today.
Great. Okay.
Girlfriend owns, yeah. Girlfriend owns-
Is his parents own?
His parents own, own Miller.
We don't have a quorum for the March sixteenth.
Probably not.
Years ago, yeah. I know it was-
For the same thing?
No, different.
Vatalas, Campbell, Gordon.
Concrete side, yeah.
We don't have a quorum for, we don't have a quorum for either.
Let's see if he has a father. I think Van and- Recognized in the last name right away when this thing's done. Because of the father. I've never, I've tried not to meet with him.
You know, I was, um-
Has he ever gone to the city offices? No, Ray?
Thought that maybe he had come to City Hall. When I first saw him, I never saw him, but not to, not to our building.
So, we don't have a quorum again. This is on the sixteenth minutes because we needed Cooper or Niblin. Because we only have Campbell, Evans, and Brown.
Hello, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled May fourth Planning Commission meeting. Let's start with a roll call, please.
Chair Campbell, I'm sorry. Planning Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Niblin? Planning Commissioner Gordon?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Vatalas?
Here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Next, salute to the flag, Commissioner Vatalas. Would you please lead that?
Pleas, yes, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's still a poor mother there.
Okay. Next, an administrative business. Is there a motion for the order of the agenda?
Commissioner Gordon.
Commissioner Gordon.
I move that the, we approve the order of agenda for tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll se- I'll second that.
Very well, I'll vote. The order of the agenda is approved four zero. Next, we have approval of the minutes for March sixteenth Planning Commission meeting. I don't believe we have a quorum for that.
That is correct.
And same thing with the minutes from April twenty. I don't believe we have a commission, a quorum for that as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Then those will have to push. Next is designation of liaison to City Council meeting for the joint session on May eleven, two thousand and fif- fifteen. That's next week.
Yes, so no liaison is needed because you're all invited to be there for the joint session.
Okay, and just for public consumption, is that going to be held here?
Yes, it is, at five thirty.
At five thirty. Great, thank you. There are no consent items. There are no items for public hearings. We have two consideration items. Why don't we go through these one at a time? Adoption of resolution determining that the two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan. May we have a staff report, please?
Catherine Farbstein, Assistant Planner. Good evening, Chair Brown and the Planning Commission. Before you tonight is the annual capital improvements program known as the CIP. Planning Commission's role, as you know, is to determine whether the CIP is consistent with the general plan. CAP has twenty new projects this time in the areas of utility and street, utility and street maintenance and repair, facility maintenance, park and open space maintenance and improvement, and required regulatory permit renewal. Planning staff has determined that the CIP is consistent with the general plan. Various staff from other city departments are available to answer questions regarding their particular projects. Comments from Hal Bonner. We're at the dais tonight and we're also emailed to you on Friday regarding the CIP, his concerns regarding the CIP. That concludes my presentation.
Very well. At this point, oh, I was going to ask, are there any questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions regarding the, the CIP and specifically the Clara Parkway description on page twelve dash one. And I just want to get clear on a couple of things. The current year budget is six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Is, uh, what was it last year?
I'm going to defer to Ray Dangunis from the Engineering Department because I feel he can better answer these questions.
Thanks.
It's basically the same. It's staff time for, you know, meetings and other staff for the Clara Parkway.
Okay. And where's that, where's that money come from, actually? Is that general fund or is it, uh?
It's from the Highway One fees. It's development fees.
It's from the Highway One development fees. And is the description and the purpose benefit descriptions the same as last year?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks, I have no further questions.
Any other questions from Commissioners at this point? Seeing none.
Through, through the chair, I believe that Public Works Director Van Ocampo indicated that he may want to make a comment as part of the staff report.
That'd be fantastic.
Good evening, Chair members of the Commission. I just want to clarify that although that's the money budgeted for, but we didn't spend that much, okay? Because the, the expenditures were merely, you know, if there's a meeting, we have to cross the bridge, there's the toll, those about, that's just about it, okay? I just want to be clear about that.
Okay.
That the expenditure for last year is not as much as, you know, like, six thousand something of that.
Yeah. Is, is, I guess I just want a quick question for you. Is the sixty-five hundred, uh, what, six, six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars? I mean, what, um, did it, that money didn't get spent last year?
Uh, we didn't, uh, the money that we spent was just for the, you know, for any meetings that we go through, whether, you know, if we go to Caltrans, if we have to cross the bridge, those type of things. All of the expenditures particularly for this project is paid for by the Seventh Day County Transportation Authority.
Okay, so the city's actually not outlying-
Yeah, except for the ones that staff uses, just for the ones that staff uses, whether, if we attend a meeting, that's about it, you know? Just want to be clear that, you know, that the transportation authority is the one paying for most of the work for this particular project.
Right. Okay, thank you.
This might be a question that would be helpful to get your answer on. I, I, just looking at the new projects, that's two million dollars added this year. Roughly seventy thousand for the local drainage and then about five hundred thousand in the general capital improvement and another one point four million for the enterprise wastewater. Can you give me a sense, is, is, is this likely an amount that will be added each year? Is this more than is typically added? Is this less? What's your sense for increasing the, the list by another two million?
Well, the projects that are listed, they are, you know, they're from the various departments. As the Engineering Department puts together the CIP, we reach out to the different departments. The, um, let's take an example, the one for the Sewer Department. The Sewer Department has their own twenty-year plan that they move, they've put forward. And so, funding for those projects will rest with the department that is handling that particular project. In the case of the local drains fund that you sell, that's a different fund that we have that, that, that project is going to be paid out of. And the projects that we have or we're bringing forward to you are the ones that we definitely need as identified by staff through this process. So, it's not, it's not like there's a set amount. It's just that if these projects are needed, they are identified and they are included in the CIP.
Right. I'm just trying to get a sense, bless you.
Excuse me.
I'm just trying to get a sense for, and, uh, thank you for reminding us that these are all, have been prioritized and vetted, et cetera. The, but two million a year on our budget, does that, does that seem like normal operating course? Is that on the high side, on the low side? I'm just trying to get a sense of context because I remember one year when a lot of the wastewater treatment plant stuff got added, it was more like ten million. So, I'm wondering if, if this is a good year, if this is a good, a small list, or is this, you know, large in comparison to historical?
I, I would say it's in the norm, within the norm. But again, you know, the list of projects or the projects that are brought forward to you is based on need, not, not necessarily that, oh, we have to-
Absolutely.
You know, that's the way it's identified, the need for the particular projects, that's why they're included.
Right, right, absolutely.
Yeah, but it's in, within the norm. If, you know, based on the size of Pacifica, it's within the norm of what it is.
Good deal, thank you. Commissioner Campbell, I see you have another question?
Yeah, just another quick question if I might. Did, did the city attorney review this particular language with the Clara Parkway on page twelve dash one?
It was reviewed last-
Yeah, it was, it was reviewed, you know. We, since we didn't make any change, we didn't have to send it over to them. But it was, when it was put in there, yes, it was reviewed by the city attorney.
It was.
But that was like, you know.
Okay, and who actually drafted the language that's in here about purpose and benefit? I know it's the same as last year, but do, do we recall who did that?
Well, normally what the project descriptions put together by staff, I mean, the entire CIP is put together by staff and then circulated to the different departments for their review.
Okay. Thank you.
So, okay, so in essence, we start the, the initial writing and then the review and comment on it.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, did the city attorney, in light of the, you know, litigation we've got on Highway One, actually review and approve this language that's in here?
Yeah. There are no changes from last year to this year. We did not change anything.
Yeah, yeah, but I guess the litigation has changed. Yeah. The posture of the city with regard to litigation has changed. Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon?
Thanks, Chair. I think this is a question for the Engineering Department. I just want to drill down a little bit on the, the six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars that's budgeted for the Clara Parkway project. I think you said that that was for staff. I just want to find out exactly what that's for. You said for staff time, but that doesn't ma-
No, it's mostly for departmental expense. Like what I said, you know, if we have a meeting somewhere that we have to cross the bridge and whatever like that, those are just the very minute costs. But we did not spend even close to that for, I mean, staff department expense didn't, uh, spent for, uh, not even close. We didn't even reach the thousand dollar or five hundred dollar, you know, for this particular year.
I'm just curious, it's a, it's a, it's a, this may be a stupid question, but for expenses like, you know, crossing the bridge during the course of working or something like that, wouldn't that, wouldn't you have money in the Engineering Department's budget to cover sort of, uh, work-related expenses?
There is a, there's budget-
It's just the rea, and the reason I'm asking is just that, like Commissioner Campbell said, by putting it in here on a subject that's in active litigation, I mean, we just got a package of, of arguments this thick for six thousand dollars to cover expenses that could, that could potentially be covered in, you know, a department's regular budget to cover regular expenses. I just don't know, I'm just, I want to know why it's, because the fact that it's in here and all of a sudden there's language that says, you know, this is appropriate for, you know, to facilitate this and that and that. All of a sudden, it's very, it's, it has a potential to be very complicated.
Let me clarify that, Commissioner Gordon. The, the Department of, the Engineering Department or the Public Works Department has budgets in different funds, okay? Now, if the purpose for us traveling to Oakland, have a meeting in, at Caltrans, is for this particular project, definitely the cost is charged to the project itself. Not all the times that we cross the bridge for a meeting, you know, that is charged to this account. No, it doesn't work that way. It is for the purpose. What is the purpose for you heading over for that meeting? If that is, you know, because of this project, then that's where it's charged. And again, like what I said, it's just those very minute department expense that is covered. We did not even spend more than five hundred bucks or some, or not even five hundred bucks for this particular year since there were no much activity for this particular project.
Thanks.
And I, if I can add, I, I do appreciate the concern and I think that staff can double-check with legal counsel before this goes to City Council, but that, that wouldn't have any ramification on the determination of consistency with the general plan. But we can certainly make sure that the legal counsel puts their eyes on this, this item once again before finalization of the CIP.
Thanks. It, it is a, I mean, I understand that the language hasn't changed from the prior year, but I, I don't know when the lawsuit was filed, but I have a feeling that that's changed the-
I did get a briefing from legal counsel before this meeting this afternoon and I am not sure if this, the Planning Commission was briefed, but there was a ruling to uphold the, the certification on the EIR. But that ruling is not final, but, but that was the ruling, is to uphold the EIR.
And when, when did that ruling come out?
When did that come out?
About, I would say like three weeks ago.
Yes.
Yeah, but it hasn't been finalized yet. Again, that's just an estimate on my part, the three weeks thing, but it hasn't been finalized.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, and I think that was a, I think it's Superior Court, so it's going to be subject possibly to appeal, I imagine. Hypothetical. What if we wanted a change to the language in the CIP tonight? What would be the ramifications of that? How could we, could we, can we affect that tonight? Not saying we're going to ask for that, I'm just curious, what would-
Well, the, the issue before the Planning Commission is consistency with the general plan. All other parts of the CIP, the priority of the projects, what gets funded, what doesn't get funded, is all squarely within the realm of the City Council.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, the only way we could get language within this changed is to find that it's not compatible with the general plan?
What, were you just thinking of the dollar amount or were you thinking of the actual language on the purpose and benefit?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the language, uh, for, for example, this will improve the level of service and decrease pollution. Those are two things that I, you know, I have no basis in fact to say yea or nay on that. But also, um, it's, it's, the purpose benefit is, it's unclear to me whether it's compatible with the general plan or not. I'm just, so this is a hypothetical. What if, what if we wanted to change the language or make changes to this language?
Well, I think that if you're concerned that this language is, is not consistent with the general plan, then I think you can recommend changes to this, yes. I do want to also point out that the, there was, um, a appeal of the Planning Commission's decision that the CIP was consistent with the general plan last year. And so, that appeal was heard by the City Council and they determined that this language was consistent with the general plan. So, I just wanted to put that out there. You guys will do what you will, but I just wanted to put that out there. And I will trust that, what, what my coworkers are saying, that this is exact same language as it was in two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you.
Oh. Commissioner Vatalas?
Um, I have a question. There are sort of conflicting issues with the fire stations. It shows fire station replacements and then in the new, um, projects, it has modernization of the fire stations. Was that in addition to the replacement of the fire stations or separate?
That is separate. Two separate items, so. One, I think, I believe is, uh, they would like to have it, the, the modernization, like to have it sooner. They would like to have the opportunity, I think, of female, uh, staff. So, they would modernize the bathrooms and living quarters. However, in the future, they would still like a possibility of having new police stations.
Okay, so one would come before the other. Okay, thank you.
Great. We've got two speakers in the audience. If you do want to speak on, why don't we take these one consideration item at a time? If you do want to speak on, on the capital improvements program, uh, please fill out a yellow cards that we've got it. First up is Leo Leon.
Do you need Mr. Chair, Planning Commission staff? First, I want to talk about the consistency of the nineteen eighty general plan, which is the current general plan in effect today. And I want you to ask staff or staff explain how in the general plan, there is a specific remedy for Highway One and that calls for an access road that runs from Reyna Del Mar to Rockaway Beach. And the highway fund, Highway One Improvement Fund has collected monies from nineteen eighty of going forward until the Clara Parkway in its current form was first put in the CIP in two thousand and twelve. Okay? I, I was absent as, as a Commissioner that night, so I didn't get a chance to vote on it. Otherwise, I would have raised the inconsistency at that time. But I just want you to be clear that the current general plan in effect, in fact, is not consistent with the CIP. And after last year's CIP approval, which was appealed, I was present at a meeting with the city attorney and this, and this now city manager, and these facts were brought forward to them. And as a result of that, there is another agreement that was reached. And I think one of the other speakers will, will elaborate on that. But be clear that at this, at this point, that I know that another agreement was reached regarding this issue. So, be very clear, and very specific language exists, including schematics and the layout of where, in fact, the improvement will go and what it is. So, it's in the general plan. The CIP is not consistent. That's one of the reasons that as a Commissioner, every year for the CIP, since I was on it in two thousand and four to two thousand and twelve, actually, I served almost eight and a half years. I asked that Engineering, who handles the CIP presentation for the, for the City Council, puts the package together. I asked that we have a presentation every year, especially of those items that are in the CIP that require coastal development permit. Because that coastal development permits are within the purview of the Planning Commission. And what makes sense to do there is simply have a briefing of those projects that you see. This project comes up every year. It's the CIP, comes up at the same time. Obviously, there's preparation and plenty of time to get ready for you and the City Council in advance to have items that are of interest to the public and have, especially now, other consequences that a lot of people in Pacifica are concerned about. So, I speak to this because I'm hoping that you, as a sitting Planning Commissioner, will see that this is important enough to continue the requests that I ask for every year. But I'm still waiting to see it. Okay? So, I wanted to get that out, especially the legal issue regarding the nineteen eighty general plan. It's very specific, it's very clear, it's irrefutable of what it says and what the CIP is describing. So, I, I don't know how much more to go into detail. As far as accounting for funds, obviously, if, if you're accounting for funds that you spent in the prior year and you're not reaching them and you don't expect to incur additional costs above what you spent the previous year, a normal budget cycle will require you to more or less go with the previous year's actual costs. So, I, I'm speaking to the point that was raised earlier about, you know, how much money is put in here and how much is spent? Or why, why would we put money, a lot of money in there that is not justifiable? You know, there's no reason to have a number in there. So, I'm going to speak later about the importance of having accurate numbers in reports, whether they be from A-Bag or the city or C-CAG or anybody else. But I'll reserve those comments for later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Hal Bonner.
Hey, good evening, folks. Let me, I speak about the Clara Parkway because that's what the focus seems to be on tonight. I, I, obviously, I submitted some documents and apparently you folks have them and have looked at them and I appreciate that. I, I want to speak a little bit about what happened last year. Some, I'm not sure all of you were on the, the Commission, but, you know, last year, this same item, the Clara Parkway and the, as part of the CIP, went to the Planning Commission and we objected to, to the finding that it was consistent with the general plan because we feel it's not. We appealed to the City Council, as the planning director said, and the council disagreed with us. Some of us, Leo and some other folks and I, met with the city manager and the city attorney and said, you know, we, we disagree with this decision, we're prepared to sue over this. And the result was, we reached a tolling agreement that, that would, that would toll the statute of limitations on, on any litigation on that. So, that, that option of suing on last year's decision on the CIP is still open, so that you know that. The, the second thing I want to say is that to see these numbers of, you know, six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars or whatever and then multiple, multiple millions of dollars in other, in other line items in the, the CIP for the Clara Parkway project is, is very strange and puzzling. I, I have wondered and asked and never had an answer either of, you know, what, what is this money being spent on? And I've never got, uh, at all, any sort of answer to it. And it's, it's very puzzling too to see these numbers of, of the staff time, I guess, is there's, there's money being spent on something in this city when in fact, I, I don't know if you're familiar with the, the, the general plan update that's, that's going to be happening, study session next week, staff has proposed in there to change the language concerning the Clara Parkway, to say that the city is not endorsing the Clara Parkway project, to say that the city is, it's, it's a project of Caltrans, they, not of the city of Pacifica, but a project of Caltrans that the city does not support and is not endorsing. And yet, for the past few years, we've seen numbers in here of the city spending money on it. It just, I'm sorry, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me. And if I were sitting where you are, I, I certainly would not endorse this tonight. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers in the audience, are there any more questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Gordon?
Here, well, here's my, here's my thoughts initially. I think it, well, actually, I've got a question for staff to start this off. So, what's really on the table for us- So, what's really on the table for us, one of the speakers mentioned that, well, there's, for the Clara Quick project, there's, you know, there's a lot of numbers here, $15 million, $6,000, blah, 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 blah. But what we're really here tonight to do is to approve a budget of $6,150 for, to cover staff expenses related to time spent on the Clara Quick project. Is that right? Or am I not clear, whatever?
No.
No.
Planning Commission does not have any purview over the budgets. So, we're here tonight just to determine if the CIP is consistent with the general plan.
Okay, that helps. Okay.
You want to roll, though? Keep going.
Yeah. Which means I should probably stop for now.
Okay, we'll come back. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, we're only here to determine whether the descriptions of things in this CIP are consistent with the general plan. We had, we don't have the general plan in front of us. One of the speakers mentioned that the general plan talks about a frontage road. And so, now, just purely for the purposes of ensuring that what's in here in the CIP is consistent with the general plan, what were the, what does a general plan say about that frontage road that was mentioned by one of the speakers tonight?
If you maybe continue with your discussion, I will find that section.
Sure. I just, before I sign off on this, I really want to make sure that what is in the CIP is indeed consistent with the general plan, since that's why we're up here. Thank you. We do have the general plan here. Oh, where is it? Oh, yeah. Oh, here it is. It's in the packet of documents that we received right before the meeting.
It's like 150 pages, though.
I believe it'd be in the circulation element.
You got a page close, 91? Get there. Which one? Land, yes. While we're looking that up, Commissioner Vidalos, is there any other question?
Yes. My question is that this is dated in 2002. Has the language on this page changed since 2002? Or is the language the same as it was last year and the prior year and the prior year?
I think there was a small change from previous years. From what I can recall, I think we added, "The project may construct additional," may was added, yes. And then the same thing down at the bottom, "The purpose, the project may provide."
You added those words?
May was added.
Okay, thank you.
So, on page 31 of the general plan, under circulation, I'm just going to start in the middle of the paragraph. "The particular design of the interchange at Lindemar Boulevard is also crucial in order properly to handle traffic and to minimize the amount of land area required for the various movements of traffic. The general plan maps, map reflects the officially adopted decision of the city council and planning commission that a frontage road linking Lindemar Boulevard and Cresby Drive be shown only on the east side of the elevated Route One freeway in this location, with the reservation in mind of continuing studies of a frontage road on the westerly side. The balance of Route One south of that point is indicated within a new alignment rather than along the right-of-way now occupied by Route One." So, I guess I would also submit to the planning commission, this is just some language that I've highlighted before this meeting from the staff report to city council last year dated June of 2014, in consideration of the appeal of planning commission's decision to determine that the CIP was consistent with the general plan. And I'm just reading just some segments. "Substantial evidence supports a planning commission's finding of consistency." "The general plan documents merely contemplated a proposal to improve Highway One without prescribing or prescribing specifications for the project. The current project is not intended to increase the overall capacity of Highway One, but to improve the current substandard segments." There is various policies that are highlighted in the staff report, that there's ample evidence in the record to support the planning commission's determination that the Clara Parkway project is consistent with the city's general plan and local coastal land use plan, including circulation element policy four, "Provide access which is safe and consistent with the level of development." Circulation element policy nine, "Development of safe and efficient bicycle hiking, equestrian, and pedestrian access within Pacifica to local points of interest." Circulation policy element, or circulation element policy 11, "Safety shall be a primary objective in street planning and traffic regulations." Circulation element policy 15, "Promote orderly growth in land use and circulation." And scenic highways element, policy four, "Encourage appropriate multiple recreational uses along scenic highways and routes other than via automobile." That was just a few sections that the project would be consistent with the general plan.
Where were you reading from?
Those are, I'm reading, actually, from a staff report to city council from June of 2014, and this was regarding last year's appeal of the determination of consistency of the CIP with the general plan. And so, that, this staff report quoted all of those policies I just read off were from our general plan.
And do we have that?
No, I was just given this right before the meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell.
Well, we've got, we've, I think it would be interesting to see those comments, but also, we do have this interesting, the speakers did raise this interesting item about the general plan consistency, and what you read out of the general plan seemed to raise an interesting issue. It kind of seemed to support what they were saying, if I wasn't completely wrong. But, I don't know, at this point, I guess I just don't have all the, I don't feel like I quite had all the information ahead of time to kind of reason through this. Again, we just, we received a lot of this information just before the meeting. I don't know, I don't know if I'm prepared to make any decision. Not saying yea or nay on it, but I'm just, I don't know if I'm prepared to make any decision right now.
I have the same sentiment with regards to this one item in the capital improvement I think that there's been new information brought that we haven't fully digested. There's been conversations about a lawsuit regarding this CIP, et cetera. The city's engaged in a lawsuit on the underlying project, which is part of this CIP element. And I think there's some good points raised that make me uncomfortable, including this in any resolution at this point.
Is there a way for us to, I mean, it seems a shame to hold up this entire document for six, for, you know, such a small little piece of it. Is there a way for us to approve everything and just put a hold on this portion and pending more information, you know, sort of a deeper dive in? Like, I would have, I'd love to see the document that you were reading from. That seems like that was directly on point, and that'd be great for us to consider as we sit up here. And I kind of feel like I don't have all, like the other guys are saying, I don't have all the information to sort of...
If the planning commission will indulge me, I would like to ask for recess, so I can talk with Mr. Ocampo about the schedule of the CIP and to see what potential continuance would do to that, so I can report back to you. And then maybe during that recess, we can set up for the next item and not have to take a second recess, if that's okay.
That sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to do anything officially to do that? Or can we just switch topics? We'll put consideration item number one on hold for now?
No, you can just maybe give me three minutes recess.
And you need three minutes to get ready? Hit the gavel, man, that's what it's for. I can't use the gavel. All right, let's do that. Let's take a recess for three minutes. And let Ms. Farbstein prepare, and we'll gather some more information at this point.
We are.
Great.
And if it pleases the commission, we can continue this item and bring you back more information on the Clara Parkway project in two weeks.
I think that would be best. I also have to admit, I have not enabled my city email, and I imagine that's where you sent it to, right?
Yes, I did want to point that out, that Mr. Bonner's comments were forwarded via email Friday.
Right. But to city accounts.
To the city email, yes. That's where we are, we need to send you communication.
Right. Well, that's where I need to enable to receive those emails, so...
And I just wanted to clarify that one commissioner was asking about somehow receiving notification that there's an email waiting for you there. You, I can explain maybe at the end of the meeting how you can maybe go about that with a smartphone and still follow the rules that we need to follow, so...
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with you as well and make sure that I've got that account enabled. I see a question from Commissioner Campbell.
Now, I appreciate the offer of continuance, and I think we should take it just to be able to digest this information and just make sure we get it right on the, you know, the narrow issue of whether this is consistent with the general plan or not, not anything else. And also, I think I'm in the same boat, actually, and getting my phone enabled to get the Outlook program, so that we can actually look at these things. And so, thanks. Apologies for thinking I didn't get it Friday.
Okay. So, we've had an offer of continuance. Is there a motion on item number one for consideration? Commissioner Gordon?
Yeah, I'll move that we continue item number one until, for, until the next scheduled planning commission meeting, is that right?
May 18th, yes.
May 18th? Okay.
Commissioner Vidalos?
I'll second.
Very well. Motion to for continuance until May 18th, regularly scheduled planning commission passes four to zero. Catherine, did you get enough time to prepare? Next on the agenda is consideration item number two, which is a presentation on planning permits and process... planning permits and process, process...
Tonight, we have something different to present to the Planning Commission. This is a slideshow presentation of the overall planning permits and process, and it's to help inform the planning commissioners and other members of the community about the overall process that we do in the Planning Department. We thought this would be the best way, by doing this, uh, slide presentation, to get the information across. And if we have, if you have any questions, please do ask them as my presentation unfolds. Be happy to answer any of those questions. Starting with, there's two kinds of, uh, two types of permits. There's ministerial and discretionary permits. Project is considered ministerial if it involves little or no personal judgment by the public official as to the manner of carrying out this project. Ministerial actions include issuance of building permits, business licenses, final subdivision maps. In other words, when someone comes in with a building permit application, if they present plans and has all the information on it that we need, and all the setbacks, the high, the law coverage, all the development standards are met, we sign off on it. Discretionary permit is not like that. A discretionary permit is a permit that the reviewing agency, can be the Planning Commission, has the authority to deny, approve, or conditionally approve a project, and that's based on appropriate findings. The California Commission, all, California Coastal Commission also has additional permit jurisdiction in some areas of the city, and that's primarily west of Highway One. There's also an additional area known as the Appeal Zone, and that's the area that's within 300 feet of the coastline, and also includes all of Pedro Point. Examples of discretionary permits, which all of you should be familiar with, are use permits, coastal development permits, site development permits, things like zone changes, development plans, and general plan amendments.
Can you give us a rough idea of the volume of, um, of discretionary versus, um, ministerial permits over the course of a year?
So, in the Planning Department, the primary, um, ministerial permit that we issue is a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, we issued 1,500 building permits, um, last year. That would include everything from additions to homes and things that you see going on, as well as water heater replacements, re-roofs, and, and things like that.
Okay, and then for discretionary permits, we can just sort of look at our agenda, but they would show up here, and onesy-twosy a month. Okay, great, thank you.
Discretionary permits have conditions of approval, and they can be imposed by the zoning administrator, the Planning Commission, city council, city staff, or other agencies. Zoning administrator hears items that are non-controversial and more routine in nature, but has the same, conducts the same public hearing process as the Planning Commission does. Another difference between discretionary and ministerial permits is that discretionary permits require secret review. Adjudicative actions are by the Planning Commission for discretionary permits. These actions are the legal process by which an arbiter reviews, can be the Planning Commission or zoning administrator reviews, evidence and argumentation set forth by opposing parties, and then makes a decision to determine the rights between those parties and what the obligations are. And this is specified in the municipal code. The Planning Commission acts as the arbiter, again, to approve, conditionally approve, or deny things such as use permits, site permits, various planning permits.
Who, who is our zoning administrator?
Uh, administrator is Tina Waremeister, the Planning Director.
Yes.
As always, the Planning Director, here in Pacifica?
Yes, um, however, I do want to mention in the zoning code, and maybe you can elaborate, they use different wording sometimes. Sometimes it's a planning administrator, sometimes it's a city planner, but it is the Planning Director that performs those roles.
Great, thank you.
As the elected officials for the city, the city council has a different role. They're the legislative authority, and they are, um, required to enact, amend, and repeal public policy. Things such as amendments to the general plan, rezonings, approval of development plans, those are considered legislative actions, and again, it's specified in the municipal code, and the city council is the elected body, has to make those decisions. However, as you all know, the Planning Commission does get a chance to make recommendations on things such as general plan and zoning ordinances. Once the, we have determined that a discretionary permit is required, we provide a development permit application to the applicant, and in that application has a list of all the information we need, what kinds of plans, what kinds of forms need to be filled out. We also figure out the deposit. The deposit's going to be based on the number of hours that staff will spend reviewing that project. And we recoup, we do collect the money from the applicant to cover staff's costs to review, to cover staff's time to review the project. Uh, once the application is submitted, it is assigned to a planner to process, and that planner generally stays with that project through the planning permit process, before the Planning Commissioner or zoning administrator, through plan check, before they get the building permit, and then, of course, once they get the building permit through construction, and hopefully the project is, when the project is completed, we have a chance, one less chance to go out and take a look at it. CD, CDP, coastal development permit projects are a little different. They require public noticing once the application is filed, and so, the planner prepares, would prepare that notice, give that to the owner, and the owner is responsible for posting that notice on the site, as well as taking a copy to the local public library. What the assigned planner does is, we take a look, when we have that development permit application, we take a look to determine whether or not it's complete. Do we have all the information we need in order to present it to the Planning Commission and complete our analysis? We also route that application to the other city departments that may have some, um, comments or conditions of approval. For example, the engineering department often reviews our planning applications, information from our planning applications. We also include outside agencies. The North County Fire Authority comes to mind, also the North Coast County Water District Review Projects. Something we've reestablished recently on an ongoing basis is the Project Review Committee, and what we do is, when we have a, we send out the application to the different departments, then we invite them to this meeting. Again, it's every two weeks on a regular, ongoing basis. We sit down, lay the plans out on the table, and everybody, um, city engineering staff, um, the fire department, wastewater, all city staff that may have an interest in this project, we sit around our table and we discuss it. We also go over any issues that may come up during review of this project, conditions of approval, whatever other issues, um, that would be helpful to have the group of us looking at this project. We have 30 days, once we have the application in, from that day starts the clock ticking, we have 30 days to review it and determine whether or not it's complete. If it's not complete, we prepare a letter, send it out to the property owner, list all the missing items. Also, at that time, we'll let someone know if there's some issues, maybe it's not an issue of whether or not the project is complete, but an issue about the project. We'd like to let the applicants know as soon as possible. And something else I want to mention is, we often have meetings, you know, once we've gone through the project, done our review, it's good to have the applicant come in and sit down and go through it, so we often do that as well. Once the project is complete, then we schedule that project for Planning Commission or zoning administrator review, if it's exempt from SEQA. If it's not exempt from SEQA, then the next phase is to start the environmental review. Projects that aren't exempt from SEQA are scheduled for the public hearing and reviewed by the Planning Commissioner, again, after the project, or zone, excuse me, Planning Commission or zoning administrator, after we've determined the project complete. Usually takes about a month, month and a half, from that, from determining the project complete to getting it before the Planning Commission. The public noticing of the hearing date is the same for all planning permits, use permits, variances, site development permits, except that coastal development permits require additional noticing. All the public hearing notices are prepared by the case planner. SEQA Guidelines. When we look for SEQA exemptions, we use something called the SEQA Guidelines. It's a booklet that lists all the different types of, uh, projects that can be considered categorically exempt, so, based on what our project is, we can look at these listings and try to determine, to determine whether or not that project is exempt. Along with the categorical exemptions, there's a list of exceptions to those exemptions. So, not only do you have to have a project be categorically exempt, but you have to go through these exceptions to make sure that, for example, it could be a single-family house, but if it's located near a sensitive area, near a creek, it may not be considered categorically exempt, and it may not be, um, one of those exceptions may apply to that project. If the project is both categorically exempt and none of those exceptions apply, then the project is considered exempt from SEQA. Public noticing of projects. Again, this is a lot of information. Anybody has any questions, happy to answer anything. A legal ad is something that we place in the local paper, Pacifica Tribune. It must be posted in the paper, come out in the paper at least 10 days before the public hearing, often it's closer to two weeks. Oh, good, you have a question. Commissioner Campbell?
Thanks. Um, the public noticing, is there any thought about, uh, and maybe it's happening already, and I apologize, but is there any thought about putting the public notice up on the web, on the, on the city, uh, website, or anything like that?
Uh, it, it, yes, we can do that. Um, we are trying to utilize the web, uh, more frequently. It would be in addition to what we regularly do, because we still need to meet this, the legal mandate.
Yeah.
But, but yes, we are working on improvements of, of that sort.
That's an ongoing situation, improving the website. We have put up staff reports and...
No, I, yeah, you guys are quite good with that.
I think I agree with you. It's been very helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, consideration items are not, do not require public consent, is that correct?
Considerations, items do not require public noticing. That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so I mentioned the legal ad, that's posted in the paper. Next item is the notice that we mail out. So, we prepare a notice, we mail it out to all the property owners within a 300-foot radius. Again, um, this is something that staff determines a 300-foot radius, and we use the tax assessor system to find out who the property owners are, and make sure we get that notice out to anybody that would be interested within that 300-foot radius. CDPs are a little different. They also require additional noticing, so it's not just a 300-foot radius for the property owners. We also do 100-foot radius for anybody that's a tenant or occupant within the 100 feet, and we do, um, uh, three notices have to be posted at the site, and that's something that the planner does, and also, we just, uh, submit, deliver a copy of that notice to the, um, public library. The first notice for the CDP was that there's an application in, here's the planner, contact the planner if you have questions. This is a, a noticing that's done in addition to, um, what's done for the other projects, but is, um, to note, to let the, um, uh, neighbors know that there's a coastal development permit, and that there's an actual public hearing date for that project. If the planner determines that the project is exempt from SEQA, the exemption will be spelled out, and I'm sure you're all familiar with seeing it in the staff reports, we describe that, we list that exemption, and we give, provide an explanation as to why we feel that, uh, categorical exemption is appropriate, provided in the staff report. If the project is approved, as part of that approval, the Planning Commission is making the, and the zoning administrator in some cases, is making the final decision to support that SEQA exemption as applied, as applied by staff. If the project is not exempt within 30 days of determining the application complete, we conduct, and, um, it's called an initial study, and that's a preliminary analysis, and that would further, would determine what other environmental review would be necessary on that project. Could be a negative declaration, could be a mitigated negative declaration, or an environmental impact report. Often, at this point, when we've determined we'll need environmental review, we send out a request for proposals to, uh, at least three environmental consultants, and they would, um, be responsible for complying with all the SEQA requirements. Do want to mention that that cost is paid for by the applicant, not by the city, so we collect the money from the applicant to cover the cost of the environmental consultant to do the work. Negative deck is a written decla, is a written statement briefly describing why a proposed project will not have a significant effect on the environment. A negative declaration is also the appropriate level of environmental review, if there's no substantial evidence in light of the whole record before the Planning Commission that the project would have a significant effect on the environment. Amigat, a mitigated negative declaration is defined as a negative declaration prepared for a project when the initial study has identified potentially significant effects on the environment, but revisions have been made to the project before public review to avoid or mitigate those effects, so that no significant effect would occur, and there's no substantial light, no substantial evidence in light of the whole record before the Planning Commission that the project would have a significant effect on the environment. An EIR is the most detailed environmental, um, document that, that is prepared for a project. It analyzes certain environmental issues you're familiar with, traffic comes up frequently, traffic congestion, um, and increased traffic, aesthetic visual, um, changes, and biological resources can be compromised. There's a list of, I believe it's around 20 different environmental factors that have to be addressed in the environmental impact report. In the EIR, there are, this, the EIR would list ways, also known as mitigation measures, in which the significant, in fact, significant effects of such a project can be minimized. Also includes alternatives to the project. Projects with EIRs that have identified unavoidable significant impacts can still be approved upon making certain findings. I've been working at the City of Pacifica for 15 years, and in the past 15 years, we haven't had to do this, so, but that's something that there's potential for in the future.
You mentioned, Catherine, you mentioned that the applicant pays for the consultant time. This also seems like a escalating demand on staff time as well, as any, from a negative declaration, working through that, or is, is this any impact on staff as we go from a negative declaration to mitigated negative declaration to a EIR? Is there staff time consumed in that process as well?
Right, so, going back to the beginning, we take in, uh, when we take in a planning application, we've estimated how many hours we feel will be involved in processing this project.
Right.
So, if I know at that point that there's going to be, uh, environmental review, I will increase the number of hours that I anticipate spending on that project. We also have something called a reimbursement agreement within, one of the forms within the application, and that's signed by the applicant, and that allows us, recently, I had a project, I think I took in about $5,000. I've exceeded that amount of money, so I go back, I have the, um, authority to go back and ask the applicant for more money to cover the cost, because it's often, you can't predict how much staff time will be at the beginning.
Right.
So, that gives us, uh, and the ability to go back and ask the applicant for additional money, so we keep track, we have a spreadsheet, and we keep track of, uh, our costs, the money the, uh, staff's time, and the amount of money used on a project.
Great, thank you.
I just also wanted to clarify that, um, yes, more staff time will be spent on an EIR, but all of that staff time is, is paid for by the applicant.
Got it.
And I do want to clarify also that we're improving our accounting procedures, so, the goal is to not, um, have to go back and ask the applicant for more money, but actually to ask them for more money before they run out of money on file with the city.
Hmm. That always seems to work better.
Yeah, it works better, yes.
We do, we keep track as best we can.
Great.
Public noticing for neg decks, mitigated neg decks. Notice of intent to adopt a neg deck, mitigated neg deck is sent out to start a 20-day comma period, and that's required for local projects, and that's posted, that notice is posted at the county. Projects that have regional impacts have a 30-day comment period, and those are sent to the state clearinghouse. However, often in the City of Pacifica, we end up using the 30-day comment period. Could be that there's state agencies or other agencies that involve, but we tend to use a 30-day comment period. Planning Commission or city council would consider all comments from the public and responses from staff prior to making a decision on the project. So, a staff analysis of the project, plus any of the environmental documents, as you're all aware, when you review the project, it's, we give the, uh, the whole bundle to you, the environmental review documents, plus, uh, staff report and our analysis. Public noticing is a bit different for an EIR. A notice of preparation is sent out to concerned agencies and residents when the project requires an EIR. We use that 300-foot radius to notify those, um, uh, neighbors that live, again, within the 300-foot radius, and that's just to let people know that an EIR is going to be prepared for this, uh, project. The notice establishes a 45-day comment period, and it really just contains preliminary information, the project description, um, enough for people to have an idea of what's going to happen, but it's not the detailed analysis portion of the project. That comes later. During this comment period, we also conduct a scoping meeting, and what happens there is we notify anyone we think would be interested, again, the residents within 300... And what happens there is we notify anyone we think would be interested, again, the residents within 300-foot radius, any sorts of agencies, Coastal Commission, North County Fire, any agents we think that might have concerns about this project. And we invite them to a meeting to get their comments on what they think the potential environmental impacts will be. So we get that early on in the process. A draft EIR is prepared by the consultant, generally by the consultant, and it satisfies all the CEQA requirements and must incorporate any of those concerns that were brought up during the scoping meeting. Again, someone living in a neighborhood is going to have a much different concerns or a much different viewpoint on a project than say somebody like an outside planner or outside consultant coming to take a look at it. So it's a way to, again, pull people in, get that information as soon as possible. Public hearing is also conducted, as you all know, also conducted before the planning commission during that 45-day comment period. We send out a notice of completion to anyone that would be interested. People that attended the scoping session, other agencies, when that draft EIR is ready for comments. The final EIR will be the draft EIR, which is a bulk of the analysis, the comments, and then the responses to those comments. The draft and final EIRs are the information that's presented to the planning commission and/or city council before the project is reviewed. Repeat, the planning commission will deny, approve, approve with conditions, or make recommendations to the city council on projects by adopting resolutions. These decisions are made by the planning commission and they have a 10-day, the folks know this, a 10-day appeal period. And that's to allow anybody that's interested to come in and appeal the planning commission's decision. If that happens, that project goes on to the city council for a final decision. City council makes a final decision to approve, approve with conditions, or deny a project for general plan amendments, development plans, and rezonings. And again, these are considered legislative actions spelled out in the municipal code and the city council is the elected body, makes those decisions. Neg decks, mitigating neg decks and EIRs are certified by the planning commission and/or the city council and that's under separate resolutions. There's different findings that have to be made, so, again, it's all part of the same project, but there's different resolutions. And this should be familiar to you from projects we've seen in the past. CDP, again, a little different. Once a decision on a CDP is final, the coastal commission is notified by, by the planner if that project is within the appeal area. Again, that's not just west of the highway, it's that 300-foot boundary I talked about earlier. That also includes all of Pedro Point, is within the appeal zone. Coastal commission has two weeks to appeal the decisions on coastal development permits. Again, within that appeal area. The follow-up after planning commission decisions. Staff, once a project has been approved by the planning commission, there's a 10-day appeal period. Sometimes it goes on to, on appeal, it would go on to the city council. Once those decisions have been made and there's, the appeals lapsed, we send out information to the applicant. We will send out that the project has been approved, will contain the resolutions. Within those resolutions, very important, very critical are those conditions of approval. So we make sure that the applicant knows what all those conditions of approval are. Those are also within the staff report, but as you know, they can change. So we make sure that they have the final adopted conditions of approval at the end of the process. That time we also refund, if there's any fees remaining from that deposit, then we will fund those remaining fees to the applicant. After a project is approved, we do, we prepare a notice of exemption, exemption, which is filed for all discretionary permits that are exempt from CEQA. And we do a notice of determinations are filed for all projects that are not exempt from CEQA. And this is again, once all the decisions have been made on the project. Next presentation in two weeks will be about the zoning administrator and different administrative types of reviews and noticing procedures within the zoning code cover. You've got a portion of it tonight. We've got more coming in two weeks.
About four weeks.
Four weeks.
Thank you very much. I, a lot of this was familiar, but I thought it was presented in a way that was, it had the right context, it had the right level of detail, so it was very, very helpful. And I, I think this might actually be useful to post in, on publicly, if you're so inclined. Because I think it's good information for the public if they want to know, you know, what's going on here and how to put a mitigated negative declaration in context with, you know, a negative declaration or an EIR and understand that sort of thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion and also I think it really does illustrate all the hard work that staff does behind the scenes before it it comes up here. And, you know, we have lots of questions about what you do sometimes, but it, I, I think at least, I think I can speak for the commissioners up here. You know, we really acknowledge all the hard work you do. We don't take the work you do lightly when you bring it up before us and, and I think that, you know, obviously all the steps you go through illustrate that, so thank you.
Commissioner Gordon?
That was a really great presentation. Thanks a lot.
I don't see, oh. Around the horn.
I read it and then you read it and it was, it was very easy to understand. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I don't see any more cards from anyone in the audience to... Okay. Leo Leon, three minutes on consideration item number two.
There it goes. Now I did it. Okay. Just one item on the presentation. I also wanted to commend it staff, commend staff as well. And I'm glad to hear there's more information coming. And on the planning permit process, there's one issue that I meant to bring up last week, or the last meeting I attended. Did not have time. And that's on the notification process. Right, currently the process gives notification only to property owners within the 300 feet. And I'd like to suggest that the commission and staff consider extending a notification as well to residents within 300 feet. Because I know from my time on the planning commission, there were instances where the property owner who is absentee does not notify the applicant, or the occupant of the property that's within 300 feet. And it leads to a lack of communication or understanding by the public. When that happens, I'm not saying it happens all that often, but it seems like a reasonable accommodation change to make so that the person that's actually living there near the project is aware of what's going to happen and notified as such. So other than that, on this item, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. David Blackman.
David Blackman, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the process and there's a couple of things that I was hoping that we can address in the future. Is, one of the slides talked about how they have 30 days to deem it if the plans are complete. And the planning department's pretty good at it, but the other departments kind of take this and leverage people. What I mean by that is this is when they start asking for their wish list. Fire and engineering start asking things that are not standards or codes and they hold your project hostage. And so that process is to see if it's complete or not, not if it's their wish list or not. I think the planning department understands that well, but they're still the leaders of this whole process and they let the engineering department and fire department kind of run wild with their wish list. I wish, what they're told to do is just find out, is there enough information so they could, that the plans reflect what's, what's there and what needs to happen? So that's frustrating. I wish that can get cleaned up and if I'm mistaken, maybe somebody can come back and tell me I'm mistaken, but I don't think I am. The other part is that, I talked about this earlier this year, is that it's my opinion, and I really believe it, is coastal development permits for two stories and one-story homes are exempt in Pacifica unless they are within, or touching the coast or there's a few. It's not across the board, but the majority of them are. Like the two homes I just worked on with Randy Barron, those are clearly supposed to be exempt. So I have a few projects down the pipeline, but the last one I put in was a $10,000 deposit. Usually this process takes me about a year or so. It's, it's in pretty incredible cost. And so these homes that are two stories and less, I think we should honor that exception or rewrite the rules, but that's it. That's all I have for at the moment.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other members of the audience wishing to speak on this consideration item, are there any commission comments? Commissioner Gordon?
I just wanted to follow up with staff about, the first speaker raised an interesting issue about notice to, I guess the idea was not just to the property owners, but to the folks who are occupying the place and like a rent, you know, renters? What was your views on that?
So, so that would be in addition to what's required by state law, which is, which is fine. And it actually, I'd like to go and check in with my administrative staff, but I don't think that that would be difficult to do. I mean, all you would need to do is put the address and current occupant. So, and then maybe just try to make sure that if the current occupant is also the owner, you don't duplicate and kill more trees by putting out the mailing. But it shouldn't be that difficult if this is something that the planning commission thinks would be a good thing to do.
I mean, I know there's, I know you've got a lot of stuff on your plate. I don't want to overwhelm you and I think it's important for you to prioritize. I just, I thought that was an interesting point. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, but, I mean, we were all renters at some point in in our lives, right? And I thought the second speaker, his first point he was making about the engineering department using that 30-day period for, you know, their wish list. I don't know if you guys had any comments about that?
Yeah, so when I first started here, there was some confusion as to what the completeness check was for. And it wasn't just, it seemed to be not just one department. So when the city prepares a application checklist, that's what we need to start the process. Start the discussion with the applicant. It's, it's not to, and so, so you need to be fair. You need to put everything down that they, they need to give you and you can't change it. You can't, they can't come back and say, oh, well, I decided I want this too. You can't, can't keep going back and calling them incomplete. So there was a little bit of confusion between a completeness check and then processing the applications and going through the various issues that come up with an applicant. So we're taking the steps to correct that. So we've, we've already kind of corrected the process and, and you need to go through your checklist. If you have everything there, you're complete. And we're also updating our application to make sure that if there is something that the fire department needs to see on applications that's not already on the checklist, that we can tell applicants ahead of time so they can just include it with their plan set. So we've already, I think, corrected the first step in understanding what a completeness check is and using our current application. The second step is we're just about done. I think we probably still maybe got a, maybe four weeks worth of work on revising our application checklist, our applications.
Thank you. That's, that sounds great. I'm glad, I'm glad that's been...
That I believe that this project review committee too has been really helpful to address these issues. Again, we're all sitting in the same room talking about a project and going over, you know, when you can put in conditions of approval and when things are complete. I think that's been really helpful.
Great.
Great.
It's good to hear about process improvement. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the communications section. First is commission communications. Is there anything the commissioners would like to say? Commissioner Vederlas?
I just want to say that I spoke to a Katie Shart regarding a project that will be coming to us in, on the 18th. Want specifics? Or is that good enough? Specifics on the project or no?
I think it was the 7-Eleven?
The 7-Eleven project. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I forget the gentleman's name, but the project up in Rockaway Beach Avenue. Developer came by and spoke to us because the property's adjacent to our house. So I believe at some point we'll be seeing that as well. Commissioner Gordon?
I just wanted to circle back. I think it was either last meeting where, I think it was Tom Clifford during the public where we opened it up for public discussion, he mentioned the in-law, addressing the in-law zoning issue. Does that ring bells? And, and we were talking, and I think there was a consensus among the commissioners that we wanted to bring that back at some point on the agenda to discuss. Is that ringing bells?
Yes, it does need to be updated to be in line with state law and it is part of our housing element program. So that'll be coming back to you. I anticipate within the next 12 months.
Great. I just want to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks. Thanks.
Next, staff communications. Are there any?
I can just go over the email communication with you. So I believe, I was told at least that our IS team had sent out instructions on how to get your city email on a smartphone or iPad device. And so that is fine to do as long as the email is going through the city server. So what's, what won't work is if you log on to your city website and forward it to say your Gmail account. Because then all your communication's going through Gmail. But if you, if you, if you can, I'm probably using the incorrect IT terminology, but if, if you can, and you can sync your iPhone or whatever you have to the city account, that's fine because the email's going back and forth through the city server. So I hope that that make that, you understand that and the difference. And so that might be an easier way to not have to log on to that weird interface and, and check your city email or forget to check your city email.
Maybe we, you could, we could get a communication about that.
Sure, I can resend that on how to, the instructions.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful.
Great, thank you. Next up, oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Mr. Leon again.
I promise that'll be my last card. At the last meeting here, I spoke a little bit about the erroneous regional housing allocation numbers. And I, you know, I did do my homework on that and I went back and looked at the census data from 1970 forward to 2010 from Half Moon Bay North. Not only did I find that from 2000 to 2010 did the population of Pacifica drop, but also the populations of Half Moon Bay, El Granada, and Montero. And also what dropped was the persons per household consistently every census going back to 1970. And the reason I bring this up is because it shows that population at least is either stabilized or dropping for the reason of the fewer people per household. Another factor though, in the census that's interesting, is the number of people that drive singularly in a car to work is somewhere in the 80 percentile now consistently. So if you're looking at everything from Half Moon Bay North to Pacifica, you get a reason why we have an increase in traffic or the appearance of such conditions when population is actually dropping and for that reason. And the reason I bring that up is because in our housing element, we talk about action items and things like that. So I think we need to do a little bit more than encourage people to take the bus. We really need to do some serious planning and, and some regional planning between Half Moon Bay and here on how to tackle this statistic. And the census statistics are fairly reliable on what we're going to do to address those numbers. You know, 80% people in one car is just, it's not going to help no matter what you do. So, but still interesting is this dynamic also where the population is shifting, where people... people in my age group are, there's a lot of us, we're living longer and we're staying put. So that was another real interesting population thing. But I'll speak more on that to City Council coming up on May 11th, I think. One thing that I really want to urge the City Council to do is ask the Planning Commission to work on the in-lu fee schedule, a formula for inclusionary housing. I was digging through the minutes of your Harmony at One in the staff report, and actually I found a formula that was first offered and part of your package in the 2007 Planning Commission staff report on page eight and nine. And there's a formula there, a very good formula, a very fair formula, that was actually offered by the applicant at that time. So I urge you to look at that. You already have the material that was given to you at that meeting. 2007 staff report, October 15th, 2007, page eight, page nine, the formula is there. And it's very fair. It just needs to be updated to reflect the current cost per square foot. Back in 2007, they were using that retail square footage of $300 per square foot. I think it's pretty, it's gone up quite a bit from then. I don't know what the number is right now. But anyway, that's something I really think that would be a great project for Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michelle Garcia.
Hi, I'm Michelle Garcia, and we are the project at 650 Corona. And in reference to what Dave Blackman was talking about, our project has been held up by the engineering department due to changes that came after the fact, after yourselves approved our project. And that has been since last October. And my building permit is still being held up in discussions with engineering. And I found it rather interesting that in my discussions with some people last week in engineering, I said, isn't it your job to give me a list of what I need when I submit my project to planning? Come back, give me the list of the things that I need. And if what we submitted isn't fair, it's your job to give me the list. And I was told on the contrary, that's your contractor's job. I said, well, how can it be my contractor's job? Isn't that why we go through this process, so that each department can give us the feedback? Because how would my contractor and engineer know exactly what the standards are for Pacifica? And each job is different. And ours is very unique, I'm finding out the hard way. And to this day, my building permit is still being held up because I cannot get someone to say, we approved this, this is what we approved, yes, this is what we can do, let's get these people to get their house started. So, and the resolution is to come back in front of the entire Planning Commission to have this conversation with engineering, because they weren't even here the night of that meeting. So my frustration level is beyond any limit that I think I could take anymore. So I'm here tonight because that is one area in the city that I feel needs huge reconditioning because I'm getting nowhere. And the changes that they are submitting back to me, we're talking infrastructure close to what is happening at Harmony at One. I'm not talking small change. I'm talking huge infrastructure to hillside preservation, to the beauty of Pacifica, and also to my pocketbook. Thank you.
One more.
Sorry, that prompted me to talk a little bit about Michelle's job and maybe some other things. I was part of that permit process for her, which is another year timeframe and $4,000, $5,000, just for the city's end. And I understand the cost of that. But it was a lot of negotiating with the fire department, engineering departments, and all the departments of what the project may look like. And after the fact, engineering and fire both said they wanted completely different what was approved here. And that was incredibly frustrating, incredibly frustrating for the Garcias. And to this time, there was no resolution with the fire department. It seemed like there might be some resolution coming forward, but they asked for a turnaround of what you see that's being built on the side of Roberts Road. And that didn't come until six months after the approval of last July here. And same with engineering, the road improvements are drastically changing, and the retaining walls are growing. And there was thousands of dollars spent and months of discussions. And then going in front of the Planning Commission last July. So that's a really frustrating thing. Now, more broad, as I've been here and in front of council, I've been in Lori's office, we don't have an appeal process for the fire department or engineering. We do for planning. We don't have them for those departments. Those departments run wild. We had just vomit-level litigation with Keith Fromm because there was no appeal process. I personally have been asked to do incredibly erroneous things from the engineering department that turned into litigation. We need an appeals process. We really need an appeals process. There's no oversight to what's going on in engineering. And now the fire department's moved off the daily city. We are their stepchildren. It has never been worse with the fire department. They almost just laugh in your face with disrespect. It's incredible. We need help, and I'm begging for help.
At this point, we reached the end of our agenda for the evening.
I had a couple of things.
Say again?
I just wanted to add a couple of things to what the first speaker was saying about regional solutions to commute problems. So I just wanted to point out that the next round of One Bay Area input is going on right now. And so staff is going to attend, and the public is welcome to attend on Wednesday night, May 6th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., One Bay Area Open House that MTC and ABAG is holding. And it's at the San Mateo County Event Center, Event Pavilion, 1346 Saratoga Drive in San Mateo. So that's this Wednesday. And then in-lu fees, the City Council is actually going to, actually directed staff to bring back information on all types of in-lu fees, including the inclusionary in-lu fee. And so look for that on our future agenda with Planning Committee, or with City Council. Excuse me.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
If there are no more comments from staff or anyone else, I was going to move to adjourn.
Commissioner Vederlas?
Second that.
Again.
There we go.
There we go.
That was my bad.
Great. Motion to adjourn passes 4-0. Anyone agree by the action of the Planning Commission, has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision right into the City Council? Thank you and good night.